Yes, all right.
Okay. Okay. Bob said to start. His mic's not working. He'll be back in in a minute.
So I guess I'll just welcome everybody to the public hearing in a completely different format this year. So public area on the budgets. So we're going to walk through some of the highlights of the budget, some of the budget strategy, some other information. Presentation is similar in some ways to what I've done in prior years, but I did add and change some of the content to kind of address anything that was new. Hopefully to provide some more background. And of course, it's in this format, how the public comment process will go. Is Bob ready to go or I'll just jump in?
I'd say just jump in.
All right.
Get started.
All right. So I go to the next slide, which this is the public comment process. We have an email address set up, which will use as long as we need to, but the address is there. The subject line just include the budget. It's a public comment for related to the budget. We had set this up for prior by our Board of Finance meeting. But any of the comments that are submitted will be summarized and will be discussed at the virtual Board of Finance meeting that we have on June 11th at 6:30. So Bob pop up. I don't know if you want to jump in, Bob, before I get started on the rest of the presentation. No. All right.
He needs to mute himself.
All right. So the next slide is just the budget process, which as we all know, as we sit in front of our computers, go back. Yep. Right. This has been a different budget process. First, the first half of it up through March through April went semi-normal, or at least into March. In April and May, when we had initially finalized the budget, the first weapon, Bob went back and requested from these department, if there were any potential budget reductions. It came up with about $104,000. That was approved a subsequent meeting. We're at the public hearing portion and then Thursday, the budget will be adopted by the Board of Finance and of course with the governor's executive. So the process as long as possible, but we're required to approve the budget within this process for this year. Everybody, please mute. You take care of that. So again, just a reminder, the capital budget versus capital plan, both these were talked about at the last board of finance meeting. The capital budget is the, or is just the projects that are approved are funded for the 2020, 21 fiscal year. The capital plan is a longer term view document. That's a 10 year detailed look and a 20 year total look at the projects, the capital replacement, the funding for policies that have been requested or town anticipates that will be needed or wanted. Again, this is, this is based upon the capital submissions that are provided by the various departments that are solicited during the budget process. So all that information gets put onto this capital plan and then that's a starting point to develop the capital budget. The next. All right. So just again, I'm going to start at the end, the goal of the Board of Finance or selectmen, when the pandemic hit was, was to adopt a budget that didn't have any tax rate increase. And we did accomplish that and we'll talk about some of the ways and some of the things that challenges we had in getting there. But the current budget as proposed is a no tax increase. Again, this was accomplished by a lot of collaboration, the board of selectmen, the board of finance and the Board of Education of the school district going back and looking at their budget and trying to get accomplish this. There's no, no increase in the tax rate. Next slide is. So I added some, some slides to try to give some perspective on some of the budget strategy that we've been using over the last several years. We'll continue to streamline town operations, increase efficiency of the service delivery while maintaining quality services where we can. We're trying to address towns. Infrastructure and capital improvement replacement needs with the least impact on the tax rate as. Infrastructure and capital improvement replacement needs with the least impact on the tax rate as as possible. Again, but we're always conscious that as as things are being approved, continue to fund capital needs to greatest extent by 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 utilizing grants and 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 any tax funding that fits within the plan. Next. Used operating budget savings to fund capital needs to reduce for future funding needs, which we did in a large way a couple of years ago or last year with the funding of the public works trucks. So if there's opportunities to reduce, in that case, it was reducing the bonding. We were take take advantage of those opportunities from the operating budget to reduce it that and to reduce the bonding. So again, we are very conscious of of looking at the use of bonds because we we all know we have a lot of projects, community septic and scoville and public works facility and a lot of things that are on that capital plan that most likely bonding would be the way that we'd have to fund those. So if we can minimize the use of that, and so some of those projects are are available and approved. Again, that's part of the strategy. Next. So some of the challenges to accomplishing the objective, the no mill increase, just for background perspective. The shift in the student enrollment at the EDM increased Adams percentage of of the region's budget, what our assessment would be. The shift just based upon the two thousand twenty approved budget was was one million one hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. If if the budget was approved at the same amount as as last year. Of course, we know that that was the beginning of the budget process and we know where we'll talk about where we ended. Some new expenditures this year for commitments that we made along the way. HES, the debt service payment to the regions, a hundred fifty thousand. The carrying costs on that building, the utilities, maintenance, those type of things is seventy thousand, which is a new line tree removal cost for where it's not new, but it was an increase of of fifty thousand, which is not even really enough based upon what's going on across the state. Every every single town that I'm involved with is struggling with the tree removal costs and trying to stay on top of that and from especially from a safety perspective. Then we had hydro maintenance costs, which are a result of the ton of water line. So these are, this is an annual cost that that's new to the budget of thirty three thousand. Of course, our our new favorite topic for about everything is COVID nineteen pandemic impacts. Looking at some projected revenue decreases and current property taxes, prior top property tax collections, that's affecting both two thousand twenty and will affect two thousand twenty one. Delinquent interest for collections, the town in accordance with executive order seven S approved. The low interest plans, basically that reduces as long as the taxes are paid interest from the eighteen percent. That's that's story rate down to three percent if the taxes are are paid by October one. Okay, trending building permit and conveyance stocks decreases based upon decreased activity and interest income. We're we're on a nice trajectory of increasing now as rates that went up, but then COVID nineteen hit the interest rates basically went to zero. So we won't expect to see the the same amount that we have got even budget in the prior year. The next slide from from an expenditure side, we're seeing increased need in social services and and you'll see that that's that's item that's funded in the twenty one budget. Some new technology costs such as software and supplies, I guess, so far have been minor. The town is aware that the state, both through the CARES Act and potentially FEMA. We we could get potential reimbursement for that, but that has to be applied for, and we're not sure when that will be, but the state just opened up the website to apply for the CARES Act money literally this week. But so we'll be monitoring that. And then our continued suffering in capital needs and and we'll talk about that in more detail on on the future slide. So the positive factor, those grandest increase by eight point six six million. So it was an increase of about two hundred and seventy five thousand in taxes. The regional school district budget was reduced and adopted at a net increase to the town of two sixty. Again, the Board of Ed used a different number because of the hundred twenty seven thousand under twenty eight thousand that we approved the budget for last year based upon the referendum had failed and when they came back with a lower budget. Our budget was already approved. So so that's where that difference is if somebody's looking at the math when the the Board of Ed says three hundred and eighty eight thousand or so, two sixty is what's actually presenting in our budget. Next. Again, as I mentioned up up front, first up in requested town departments for reductions after the initial budget was approved of a hundred and four thousand, that the capital budget was reduced by a hundred and sixty thousand as compared to prior year in order to accomplish this. And and the regional school district team budget or their final approved budget was was reduced as compared to two thousand twenty by by six hundred and thirty five thousand. So is it items that, you know, where we started and some of the things that happened along the way of how we were able to get and accomplish a budget with no mill increase for this year. Some other notes. As in past years, certain grants are budgeted in the capital non-recurring fund, Losip, which is used to support the capital budget, which is required under state statutes in town aid road, you know, if it's received, those monies will be appropriated and spent for roads or road related things in in the capital and non-recurring fund. All right. And just some some highlights, the expenditure budget has been posted on websites. So I just pulled out some of the more significant over ten thousand dollar changes. The finance department is up fourteen thousand. That's due to that position, the finance director position being increased to full time based upon the amount of grants and and other things that we have. It's just requiring more hours to kind of get get everything done. Task clutter budget was decreased by seventeen four sixty six. This was due to the elimination of the assistant task clutter position. It was a vacant position at budget time, and so that it was eliminated in the two thousand twenty one budget. Benefits insurance are up due to increased costs in for health insurance and for pension contributions. Intensity fund is up due to salary. Salary contingency for related to union negotiations. Fire protection and mostly for Haddon Lake is down to seventeen thousand dollars due to decreases estimated property and vehicle maintenance for Haddon Neck. Police Department, police. They police the budget is down sixty three thousand and that's due to a new trooper being assigned to the town at a lower salary and benefit rate. All the works was down to decreases in minor equipment repairs, sign replacements and outside contractors. Social and senior services was up to twenty seven thousand dollars again, as that is due to increased hours and and salary increases for that department. As I mentioned, the town is seeing an increased need for those services, and so they were funded this year in the budget. And youth and family services was up to eleven thousand three hundred and that's again due to the increase in the assessment to the town because as we both we find that cooperative to the with killing work. Next, right? HK Recreation Authority, the budget was up twenty thousand. That was increases due to the decrease prior year was kind of returned more to the level that we had funded in previous years. Culture and Recreation was up approximately twenty six thousand. That's mostly due to the increase in the funding for the library. They have been flat for several years and and so that it increases to get them kind of back to the level of funding as a percentage of the past. The capital improvement budget, as I mentioned, is down a hundred and a hundred and sixty thousand. The tax funded portion of that is down a hundred and sixty thousand. And again, that was to avoid increasing the mill rates. So we managed that number to offset some of the other increases to be able to accomplish that. Debt services up sixty one thousand and and the main reason for that was the increase due to the HES payment of a hundred and fifty thousand. The region seventeen budget is up, the Haddon assessment is up to two hundred and sixty thousand seven hundred one, as I previously mentioned, as compared to the amount that was approved in the two thousand twenty budget. Some of the revenue highlights. We're expecting some decreases in supplemental tax, new car purchases, general property tax prior year. Those tax elections are down this year. We expect that to to carry over. Lowly tax credit program, reduce that amount, the interest in lean fees. Again, we expect to be down both from the de- decrease in actual taxes paid plus the implementation of that low interest program. We expect people to take advantage of that. And so that will decrease since the interest rate is three percent versus eighteen percent. And these more impacts are related to anticipating some of the impacts of COVID nineteen. Again, these are not very large numbers, but we definitely do anticipate an impact. So we'll probably not really know the full extent of the impacts due to until January, you know, based upon the timing of tax payments of those that have been escrowed versus what happens in January for for taxes that haven't been escrowed. You know, building use, again, same thing, just looking at building permit fees. Right now they're trending lower. So this is just adjusting, expect that to continue. And the interest income we talked about due to the decreased interest rates that occurred after COVID nineteen, the stock market went a little crazy. Next slide, capital budget. And as I mentioned, the budget presents twenty one, two thousand twenty twenty one approved projects and related funding sources. The capital plan includes the known and requested projects and estimated costs, including roads, not all the items presented in the plan are based upon formal estimates. So sometimes there's amounts there that, you know, those would have to be vetted a little bit more if the project is is to go forward. So the the slide presents the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty twenty one capital budget that was approved by the Board of Finance last week. So that this information should be out on on the website as well as here. So funded some of some of the message, the message trailer and generator, the revaluation we've been funding over several years. And then it does include some things to look forward that hopefully that we can get down in the near future, the community septic design at four road crossing. Some fire department items to continue to fund some of these rescue vehicle and engine replacements. Again, this these two at two fifty for Haddon Volunteer Department, and that'll get us basically half funded for those two trucks. There's still another half a million to go for each of those trucks to rest in there about a million dollars. Again, we're trying to manage them to pay for these things using cash and not having to bond because the trucks, as we've discussed in previous meetings, kind of got stacked up instead of being spaced out because we postponed doing them. So this is an effort to kind of fund that. And again, leave us with some bonding capacity for some of these other projects that the town would want to do. And then some public works equipment that would just reduce some of the costs. We wouldn't need to rent some of this equipment if if we had the equipment to take care of some of these things. So the funding for this, the the four hundred and twenty five is the amount that we looked at in the budget. That's funded with tax dollars. We're looking to transfer five hundred and seventy five thousand dollars from the current budget that wasn't used due to the bonds being issued. We just issued bonds for the roads and and the other projects in in June of this year. So that budget would be available and then to use some of the the unallocated money in in the capital non-recurring fund to fund the projects that we just went over on the previous page. All right. So again, I presented something similar to this last year. Just to look at our our future capital plan challenges. So if we look at the years requested, and this is just again based upon the years items were requested. Well, the requests are two million dollars for for next year, one point nine million dollars the year after nine hundred and ten. And then one point two and then eight ninety four is getting a little bit more in in the reasonable range. I'm looking at what's driving that. So the the fire replacement of some of these fire vehicles that we postponed, some of the firehouse maintenance, such as siding, that type of thing that that needs to be done. And then some additional public works vehicles again over the next five years that that are on the list to be replaced. And then the balance is 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 the one point five million of a lot of other projects again that are listed. Listed in the detailed capital plan. So those are the highlights. Yeah, I'd just like to thank, you know, all all the board of selectmen, the Board of Finance members, finance department, the town departments and 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 the Board of the Regional School District. This definitely was a challenging budget year. Unfortunately, I'd like to say that I think that that challenge is behind us. I think the twenty two budget will be more difficult. There are several several unknowns as far as how this COVID nineteen impacts tax collections and and other items, but this was definitely a very team collaborative effort and and we couldn't have kind of couldn't have accomplished getting to a normal increase without everyone, everyone working together. And then finally, again, just as a reminder, and we'll have this slide deck posted. So you have these. It was on the agenda. But the public comments are being accepted at the email address that's listed. And then these comments will be summarized and we will discuss them on our our meeting on Thursday where we will set the middle rate, approve the final budget and and set the middle rate. So those are 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 the highlights. I'm not sure, Bob.
Let me play this. Probably gonna be hard now, hopefully.
Yes.
Go ahead. Okay. As you can see, I'm on my phone. Uh, it's just a continuation of my day. Pretty much everything I've touched today has broken. This computer not being an exception to it, apparently. It's indicating I was on and live and unmuted and it lied. Anyway, uh, so Joe went over most of everything I was going to say and then more and much more detail. I'd just like to wrap up by adding my thanks to all the people involved in this year. Budget preparation. I've been involved in them for a number of years, both on the Board of Finance with the fire department. And without a doubt, this has been so far the most challenging. And thanks to COVID nineteen, challenges probably do remain. Particularly want to thank the Board of Education, the regional school district staff and superintendent Hagman for their efforts. I mean, it makes a huge difference in our budget this year. The reductions they were able to implement. So my hearty thanks to them. Finally, I would encourage everyone to please make comment on the budget. This is obviously not our normal procedure. We'd be able to get these comments live tonight. But doing it online has has proved to be cumbersome. So please email them in as Joe has indicated, they'll be considered. The Board of Finance convenes on Thursday of this week to go over the comments, finalize the budget and set the middle rate. So with that, I'd like to thank everyone for attending. And Joe, unless you have something to add.
Nope. I think that 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 covers the public hearing and the presentation. We'll do it again on Thursday.
All right, great. Thank you, everyone. This meeting is not, the public hearing is now over.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
This conference is no longer being recorded.